Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call South County Council, read on your two February twenty-fifth order. Now please stand for the presentation and remain standing for the pleasure of reading.
Let us pray. Our dear kind heavenly Father, we do thank you for allowing us an opportunity to serve. We invite you into this place as we continue the work that you've given us for the people. We acknowledge that it's in you that we move and have our being, and that you are the often finisher of our being. We ask that you help us to be obedient to your will and be kind, loving, and considerate of everything on our agenda. Give us wisdom, understanding, and help us to make decisions according to your will. We ask that you bless everyone under the sound of our voice, bless our whole county, city, and our country, leadership on every level, and help us to know and feel your presence when there is trouble in our homes. These are our blessings we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Geller, would you please change the agenda?
Yes, sir. This morning, I amended the agenda to the two Chamber of Commerce events, the State Center and the C E R empowered she represents to have. All of that information is in the package.
Thank you. Will make for the agenda, sir. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda in discussion. You're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We have a motion to approve amendments from our County Council meeting on February eleventh. It's approved.
Yes, sir.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve amendments from County Council meeting on February eighth, eleventh, in the discussion. You're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Land use matters, Ms. Rouman. P D six oh six oh five.
Good evening, Helen Riedman for planning staff. This is P D oh six oh five, revision two, at Highway five twenty-one south and thirteen ninety-one, Winnieham Road. The applicant is Miss Tammy Hodge, of the property owner. She is here to speak on behalf of the request. This is to revise the existing plan development to add commercial, investor, institutional, and retail uses specifically to the thirteen ninety-one Winnieham Road property. Because this is a planned development, it does impact the entire acreage that's part of that. This is the entirety of the land that is part of thirteen ninety-one Winnieham Road, but there is a small parcel that fronts on Winnieham Road that is the target of this request. This property is fairly heavily wooded with the exception of that one parcel on Winnieham Road which has a workshop on it. This is the applicant's home site on the major A-bridge where they do have their own personal farming operation, and then they have this workshop space. It is owned and planned development and has been for the last almost twenty years. This was established in two thousand and six to allow for a series of eight R nine style residential single-family lots on Winnieham Road. Angela have been making workshop on that big nine eight acre parcel that's known as thirteen ninety-one Winnieham Road. This primary request is to add additional uses to the property thirteen ninety-one Winnieham Road, and then there are other minor modifications for consistency and for easy use for the ordinance for the plan development in general. There was a modification done on this approximately ten years ago to increase a certain number of uses on that thirteen ninety-one property, but we're coming forward today with this request to finalize requesting amended uses on this property to give the most potential utility for it based on the size and scale of the uses in the facility. This red arrow indicates the property on the site plan. This was the original concept plan that was approved in two thousand and six. As you'll know, there's a series of acreage parcels that are, could potentially be created along Winnieham Road, the single-family homes, and then that existing workshop space with the remainder of the applicant's home property. This is the parcel in question that the uses would apply to under this request. There is a cabinet-making workshop on that building. It is a metal structure. It has met building code for commercial uses. It's historically been used for commercial purposes, but as I said, this request is coming forward to look at the whole host of potential uses that would be compatible with this site given the existing development in the area. It's changed significantly in the last twenty years, and given the size and scale of that existing building itself. This is what the property looks like. It does have controlled access gates to it. It has two roll-up doors. It has an office space. As part of this request, there would be no changes to the structure. It would be simply a matter of allowing specific uses to go into the property. The conditions that exist in the planned development currently and that we carry forward that pertain to this particular parcel is that the existing structure will be utilized. This means that they would not be approved to come down and tear down the building and build something different. They'd have to come back to council, bring changes to that. All building code requirements will have to be met for any change for occupancy if they put a new use in the building that requires a change in building code. Landscaping and visual buffering will be required between the workshop and the residential unit to the northeast. There's a house there. There's actually existing vegetation that's been in place and has been since two thousand and seven. The parking will be crushed and run just as it is today. And then there is an hours of operation limitation on this property that's been in place since two thousand and six that allows Monday through Saturday operations from eight a.m. to seven p.m. without Sunday operations. All of this will remain in effect. It's not supposed to be changed. There are about four or five pages of potential uses that go in there based on names code that we have submitted. All of these operations are of a size and scale and manage impact that are similar or in nature, and because of the size of the existing structure and the limitation of that existing structure, we believe that these can be compatible with that particular property and the existing pattern of development in the area. Additionally, any particular use that could have an anxious outdoor storage component is specifically prohibited from this use or will require screening. This doesn't allow any junkyard abuses. It doesn't allow anything that would require a special exemption, although on the ordinary circumstances. So as I said, the uses are selected based on the size of the existing property. There's a similar land use impact to the existing creative use in the P D, and it's to give the most flexibility for future marketing with high compatibility with the area to allow the property owner to actually market this space for rentability. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request. In the nearly two decades since this planned development was created, the five twenty-one quarter has seen some significant changes. What was once predominantly rural, a rural area with small scale, single-family residential development and large agricultural tracks has fully transitioned to an industrial manufacturing quarter. In fact, this building aligns with the back entrance to Commo's Higher Americas. The purpose of the P D amendment is to address these changing conditions in a manner that is both sensitive to the surrounding areas of the existing residences while providing the applicant with some additional flexibility for that property. Having answered any questions that you may have, we also do have Ms. Hodge here to speak on behalf of the request.
Any questions, Ms. Rouman? Thank you, Ms. Rouman. Prior to council taking its second reading, we will have a public hearing so that anyone wishing to speak for or against this planned development can do so. Anonymous, we have a public hearing open. Anyone wanting to speak, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing none, public hearing closed. What is the pleasure? Number second reading. Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we have second reading on P D six oh six oh five. Any further discussion? You're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes, second reading passed. Orders number twenty-five ten eighteen, Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Chairman, this is Council ordinance twenty-five ten eighteen. It's the capitalized sales tax bond authorization ordinance. It authorizes more more funds and authorizes more financial consideration notes or bands. Principal amount of total debt, not exceed forty million dollars. Incorporates, if you can see, the doubt question. Section three provides that the bonds may be placed publicly or privately. Section twelve provides that the proceeds of capitalized sales tax are placed as security for the debt and the full face of credit of the county is blessed as security for the payment of the debt. Section twenty-four authorizes third informant L L P to act as bond counsel, disclosure counsel, and tax counsel, and authorizes companies, they just won't advise the L S C as financial advisors. Those are the hot spots. We don't have a public hearing, first second reading. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. It's my understanding that these bonds are still included, the bonds for the Delane Community Center. Is that correct?
This ordinance does not address which projects, which projects in particular would be funded. It just authorizes the sale of bond. Yeah.
I may answer that. Yes, sir. We have built in seven point one million dollars of the first band which would include the engineering, architecture work and the site. As you know, we've got some site issues going on as well, so all that's included.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a... Prior to taking a second reading, we will have a public hearing on this ordinance as well. Anonymous, we have a public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please proceed to the podium. Seeing none, public hearing closed. It's been moved and properly seconded that we have second reading along this number twenty-five dash ten eighteen. Any further discussion? You're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Second reading passed. All votes, second reading passed. The new business, orders twenty-five ten nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, this is Council ordinance twenty-five ten twenty-nine. Twenty-five ten nineteen is the litter body board amendment, and the purpose of this ordinance is to remove the representatives from the sheriff's office and the city police department and replace those with litter patrol officers from the county, one from the city. The change is made for the fourth.
Any questions, Ms. Bryant? Where's Counselors? That's approved or approved?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we have first reading on orders from twenty-five ten nineteen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Orders passed. Orders twenty-five ten twenty.
Orders ten twenty-five, ten twenty authorize the abandonment of a paper street. You have on the screen a drawing that shows the end of the limit of Gibbs, Gibbons Street. It was, at the last Fortland Land Commission meeting, you approved the sale, the Fortland Land Commission approved the sale of some lots that are on Coffee Street, and that was discussed, it was mentioned that the county council would need to abandon this interest, whatever it is, in Gibbons Street, and evade that by quickly indeed, the same person who bought and paid for the lots owned by the Fortland Land Commission. So there's the sketch, the hashed area that's to be abandoned and sold. It's going to be built with aerial photographs. Well, that's the plaque that showed that was recorded that created the paper street for them, did not have the aerial photograph. Well, anyway, aerial photograph, I'm sorry. The Gibbs, Gibbons Street was never developed, no previous treat. It was never accepted by the county for maintenance. It exists only on paper, but the consequence of that plaque that's recorded some years ago, when you remove paper streets and how it came into existence. And the person who's developing this needs that little, that split down there to put in that cul-de-sac at the bottom of Coffee Street. Go ahead, take your questions. Any questions?
Yes. When you say eliminate a paper street, so what's actually going to happen to the street? Would it be used as a public right of way?
No, I think you develop a plan to put some of those lots on the northern side of Coffee Street down, and it'll be developed part of the southern street.
Okay, so the part that you said is hashed, that will become a part of, that will be included in the acreage of that lot that is there, is moving right now.
Yes, that's right. The last lot, coming from left to right, the last lot on the cul-de-sac at the top of the page, moved down to some of those other lots. And lots on the south side of the street are a hundred and twenty feet wide, and lots on the northern side are a hundred feet wide.
And I'm asking this because, you know, these are the kinds of things that we, decisions that we make in the, in the future, that come back and want us to undo what we've done. So how will, okay, I'm looking at Gibbons Street, so what happens to the planted part of Gibbons Street?
At the bottom of the page?
Yes.
It remains as it is, remains a paper street.
And the hashed part will be a part of the, of the parcel?
Yes.
And, okay, so they will have ingress and egress from?
By the way, it's Coffee Street.
Coffee Street, that.
Coffee Street. That's why Coffee Street is a cul-de-sac at the bottom.
Okay. Well, it doesn't show any ingress or egress that would, possible, you know, ingress or egress, not in this drawing, in this diagram it doesn't. But I see what the potential could be, but I think those are questions that need to be answered.
I can get with you after the meeting, show you a bigger drawing of the whole area.
When you say that they have access, you know, road access to get to the property, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, Ms. Bryant? Number approval for reading?
Sir.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we have first reading on Gibbons Street. Any further discussion? You're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Orders twenty-five ten twenty passed. Orders number twenty-five ten twenty-one, Mr. Bryant.
Twenty-five ten twenty-one is another paper street. Chairman, you have on the screen aerial photograph that shows an area, parts in blue is owned by an organization called Gray Cat Properties L O C. They own the property to the northern street to the southern street. There's one little parcel off to the left that also fronts on Brookfield. Letters are written, certified mail returns received, green return cards received, people who live in that parcel in the corner, not expressing interest in having the apartment in Brookfield, so Gray Cat Properties would like, you know, own all of Brookfield, which is another paper street that's recorded, because it was created by the plaque that's recorded. It blew up a little bit, blew the third plaque, you were. See, when that, something being the plaque that's recorded, Brookfield's road was created over here. Place was never developed, go back to the middle plaque. This is a fairly recent plaque that shows Brookfield, it says Brooksfield, it's been Brookfield. And it shows the area that Gray Cat would like to acquire. Again, all we're going to do is banner what areas we have, we'll do a quick long beat.
That's approved or read?
Sir.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we have first reading along orders twenty-five ten twenty-one. Any discussion? You're not all in favor, please say aye. Orders two, first reading passed for ten, twenty-five ten twenty-one. I am in the report's proclamation for the Vietnam War Veterans Appreciation Day on March twenty-eighth. Let's approve the process. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the proclamation for Vietnam War Veterans Appreciation Day on March twenty-eighth in South County. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Community reports, internal affairs. Chairman, terms of this met, all members present, we took a following action. First, starting with alcohol and drugs commission, if you have your help now, is to appoint Holly Chase and Susan Bagwell to the board and reappoint Randy Hall. That's motion second, committee. All in favor, please say aye. All votes. Library board is to appoint Denise Robinson in place of Ms. Randy Adams to the library board. Motion second, committee. All in favor, please say aye. And the housing authority, a motion second to appoint, this varies the landing, to replace the individual residence. Motion second. All in favor, please say aye. And that concludes our report, okay. The fiscal tax, the property committee, did meet all members present. We went into the executive session, no action was taken in executive session, but we came out of executive session, made our motion and a second, but accounting to great temporary construction, these went to the D O T for a project on Pike Road near North Main. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Number two, we asked staff to, we have a motion and a second to have staff pursue the sale of some property, some county-owned property on North Main Street. All in favor?
Aye.
All votes. And lastly, we have a motion and a second to decline and also sell a spectrum building, and we are continuing to explore other options to accommodate the needs of the audit organization that may offer. All in favor? Please say aye. Public Works Committee.
Public Works Committee met today, and our biggest, our only thing we had on the agenda was progress. And we began talking, and we've got a lot of work, we've got a lot of work doing this. And Mr. Washington, Councilman Washington, has really brought this to the forefront, and I'm going to turn it over to you and let you kind of speak where we at, but we are going to have a meeting next, next two weeks with an hour-long conversation about this, so we are looking at it. Thank you, Councilman from Desale and Mr. Chairman. We had some general conversation today, but there was not enough time to get into the intricacies of what we need to discuss in terms of setting up a system that will be efficient for the worst roads. And so we had some refreshing dialogue based on the last conversation we had, which was in December of two thousand and twenty-four. And in two weeks, the councilman from Desale will call and have a public works committee, and we expect to spend some considerable time talking about how that can work to address the most horrible roads in the county, where folks seem to have a great deal of difficulty with ingress, increase, and egress. We do have some data compiled by staff. We'll be reviewing that data over the next two weeks, and then we'll come in ready to go to work, and we expect that meeting to go about an hour, so we plan to really put in the work. So just wanted you to know that council, it's not falling on council's deaf ear, that we're interested in providing relief for folks, and we'll be talking in detail about that in a couple weeks. Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Our report's from council members on opening the training that we're accomplishing. I'd like to announce that the Third Annual Women's Pioneers Awards Luncheon will be taking place on Saturday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, from nine a.m. to ten thirty. And I'd like to announce that we have two honorees connected to the county council. One is our very own, Ms. Vivian McGee, and also former chair, Mrs. Naomi Santos, of High School. And Kelly has purchased, Kelly has purchased six tickets. If anyone is interested in attending. Real quick, I know Mrs. McGee asks about S U A's from time to time. I don't remember everything, it was kind of late in the meeting, but the two main quarters I got was Manning Avenue Bridge Loop contract letting May, so you'll see construction this year finally in that. Manning Avenue Validation Project, I think it's September, about sooner, then on what? I'm waiting for a third-party situation. Anybody there that's in Red Bay Room, which I am as law enforcement, vote for May to June if you find open Red Bay Room. So that's my favorite, the S U A's. I have more.
Thank you.
Okay. My report's, I'm sorry.
Just one other comment before I do that. Mr. Burns is law enforcement, so we need to really be careful. He was a secret agent, so you need to be careful about that. Other comment is, he's got a public issue?
Yeah, yeah.
The Delane Community Center site tour on March fifteenth, I just want the public to be aware of that, of course. I'm sure several council members will be there, including the chairman, members from the school district, staff and superintendent and chairman, and we'd like for the public to come out and have the experience as well. We'll only be meeting one more time prior to that again, and I think that will be on the tenth, and the event is on the fifteenth. So I thought I'd just remind folks about that today, and I know the folks in Wedgefield, Cherryvale, Kane-Savannah are really excited about that. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Just as a reminder, all of the wonderful reports are in your package. Come down to the administrator's report.
No report, senior, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Come down to the public comment portion of our agendas. Mr. Johnson's hour in his speech on the public comment, I mentioned three minutes. Comments are to be made. Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions, they will be answered after the meeting. Public comment is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of council, comp to residents, those here in attendance, and those who may see this at a later date. My name is Mara Washington. This is my granddaughter, Camille Washington, and on behalf of Camille and our entire family, we want to thank everyone for their kind gestures during Camille's illness, and especially your prayers. As you can see, she is healthy and bright, and we're looking forward to many, many great things from her in the future, and just, I really appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Chairman, I'd just add, if I could, really appreciate you tapping in with me pretty much every day, even though I was not emotionally in a position to respond every day to this. You know, that little girl is very special to me, but really appreciate you checking in to give a status report, county administrator, as well. Really important. I shared it with the family. So even though I didn't respond every time, just because emotionally I just wasn't, wasn't ready to, but it was very helpful, and appreciate you, appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, public comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Jane King, and I live in Wedgefield. I've lived out there almost forty years. I, I love it out there. I love the country. We have a small farm. My concern is the litter. It's like, just, nothing gets better. Nothing gets better. And we have, we ride horses out in the woods, and people are dumping washing machines and microwaves, and there's mattresses laying on Wedgefield Highway, and I call all the time. If I don't call, it's like nobody calls, and I, and I know hundreds of people drive by this all the time, and I sound like I'm the only one that complains about this, and I hate to complain, but that's what it's come to. And I have a friend that answers the phone at the city, at the, at the department that I need to call, and she told me, Jane, two sixty-one, I just found this out a couple weeks ago, two sixty-one is the state. They're responsible. They're responsible. Obviously, they don't care, because I watch, right now, and it's probably been there two months, on, it's a mile north up to Manchester State Road, there is card, the heavy duty card, like when you put tile down in your, in your house, that hard cardboard with the plastic, with those zip ties, it's rolling in the ground now. It's right on the side of the road, and I'm thinking, they're working on the road, when they move on, somebody will pick it up. It's still there. So I called my councilman and wanted his advice on what to do, and he said, it's a problem. It's, the state owns that road. But it's not only the state. I mean, it's not only two sixty-one, it's four forty-one, five twenty-one, Paxville Highway, Remini Road, all those roads down there. Every year, we have a national enduro. It brings a lot of money into our, here, and, um, I work at it every year, and people come, it's national, they come from all over the United States, and they come in on three seventy-eight from Columbia, off of twenty on four forty-one, five twenty-one, I ninety-five. If they're smart, they know how to cut through Somerton on the Remini Road. If not, they go to Manning and come that way. Those roads are disgusting, and that's what these people see when they come, and I took note coming into town. I don't come to town very often. I'm a country, I like the country. My husband does the shopping, he does everything he thinks is safer than me to stay home, and I agree with him, because I think nobody does their job anymore. Nobody cares anymore. I care, but I feel like I'm the only person that cares out there, and I can remember when we used to have, the prisoners were picking up trash. They were happy to get out to do it, and then I guess COVID came, and now they're not allowed to do that anymore. I can remember when there were little signs under, the big signs that said litter pickup by Goldkiss, or, you know, they had, they had plants. Yeah, people would pick up, you know, like me, you know, pick up the trash, but it's more than that, because now people are dumping appliances, like I said, and mattresses, and we either need to be stricter, you know, when we catch these people. I came down Remini Road and this man was stopped taking tires out of the trunk of his car and throwing them in the ditch, and I didn't realize it till I got right next to him and kept going. I should have gone ahead, uh-oh, I see my timer. Uh-oh. Um, but anyway, that is my concern, and, and I would do anything to help anybody figure a way out. Well, three minutes isn't long enough for me to, yeah, see, this is, this is my concern, and I need help.
We'll call a help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Anyone else? Seeing none, public comments closed. Mr. Chairman?